Good evening and welcome to the April 9, 2024 Work Session of Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chair Brown, I serve as Chairman of the Board, as well as Commissioner for the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making it possible for our citizens, for our television audience and live streaming audience. I would like to present you your Gaston County Commissioner, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township. Good evening, I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Conlagard, Dallas Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
Good evening, Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards and Certificates. There'll be many of these tonight, so sit back, relax and enjoy. Wait on Commissioner Keeger to get down and then we'll start with the entirety of all 100 proclamations we have. That's my joke for Donna, I'm sorry, because Donna works so hard on what she does, so we make fun of her, but she does an outstanding job, her and her staff. You get the rest of the week off, so. Mr. Keeger?
Yes.
Your daddy says continue. Earl? Where's Earl? Dallas Rescue Squad, folks? Mark? You gonna fill in? Earl's supposed to be here. Good evening, sir.
Yes, sir.
Where's Earl?
Not sure.
Okay.
This commendation is to recognize the 50th anniversary of the Dallas Township Rescue Squad. And I'll just get on with it. Well, I'll tell you what, I'll go ahead and move on to a different one, because I think they were gonna have several of their members here tonight. And I'll just wait till the third one. May I do that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll do the Knights of Columbus, if your contingency would like to come up. All of you, come on up. You're gonna get in a picture, too, if the Chairman allows it. He said he didn't know about time, but we'll work it out. Hey, Ray.
Hi, Tom.
And I'm proud to say, I'm not, I don't take part a lot over the years, but I've been a Knight since, I believe, 1977 or '78. I don't know if any of you remember Dick Grabner. Dick grabbed me one year and said, "You're coming with us." And then I became a Fourth Degree also, I think when I lived over in Belmont, the Queen of the Apostles, which I was a charter member of their council. So anyhow, this is to recognize the 25th anniversary of the Fourth Degree, which is the highest level of, within the Knights of Columbus. And there are two councils that are part of the William Gaston Fourth Degree Assembly, Queen of the Apostles in Belmont, and St. Michael's here in Gastonia. And whereas, the William Gaston Fourth Degree Assembly, 2531 of the Knights of Columbus, named after and in honor of Gaston County's namesake, Judge William Gaston, is celebrating the 25th anniversary of its charter. And whereas, the Knights of Columbus is a renowned Catholic fraternal service organization founded in 1882 in honor of Christopher Columbus, and is dedicated to the principles of charity, unity, fraternity and patriotism. Whereas, the Fourth Degree, often known as the Patriotic Degree, is the highest degree of the Order. Chartered as an assembly, it encompasses one or more councils in the area, and is more visual principle, whose primary purpose is to encourage active Catholic citizenship and foster the spirit of patriotism in members and the community at large. And whereas, the Knights of Columbus has grown to become one of the world's largest Catholic fraternal service organizations, with nearly 2 million members actively involved in charitable activities, community service, and advocacy for the marginalized and vulnerable. And whereas, the Knights of Columbus has contributed billions of dollars to various charitable causes worldwide, in 2023 alone, the Order donated more than 185 million to charity, and more than 49 million volunteer hours. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners joins in commending and recognizing the William Gaston Fourth Degree Assembly, Number 2531 of the Knights of Columbus, upon the celebration of its 25th anniversary, and extends its heartfelt gratitude for their outstanding contributions to our community, their unwavering commitment to charitable causes, and their tireless efforts in making a meaningful difference in our society. And we will adopt that at our voting meeting on the 23rd. And I'll present this to Ray, and ask you to say a word or two, and then we'll get a picture.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Keeger, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Thank you again for this opportunity and the recognition. I don't want to be too redundant, Mr. Keeger kinda highlighted what our organization is about and what we do. Again, this particular segment of the Knights of Columbus focuses on patriotism and patriotic activities, so we do things like support things through the Shining Hope Farms in Mount Holly, try to be visible at Veterans Day parades and things of that nature. So again, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for this recognition, and then just invite any Catholic gentlemen who might be watching tonight to reach out to us and help join us in serving the community. So, thank you.
You guys wanna step forward here, we'll get that picture. Right now, we will have all that together. Try to make sure Tom gets in the back, he might break the camera.
Y'all shift down just a little bit to your right, please. Kinda center up.
We do need directions. Direction by the high chair in the back.
Seven or seventy-eight. I don't know if any of you remember Dick Grabner. Dick grabbed me one year and said, "You're coming with us." And then I became a fourth degree also, I think, when I lived over in Belmont, the Queen of the Apostles, which I was a charter member of their council. So anyhow, this is to recognize the twenty-fifth anniversary of the fourth degree, which is the highest level of, within the Knights of Columbus. And there are two councils that are part of the William Gaston Fourth Degree Assembly, Queen of the Apostles in Belmont and St. Michael's here in Gastonia. And whereas the William Gaston Fourth Degree Assembly, twenty-five thirty-one of the Knights of Columbus, named after and in honor of Gaston County's namesake, Judge William Gaston, is celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary of its charter. And whereas the Knights of Columbus is a renowned Catholic fraternal service organization founded in eighteen eighty-two in honor of Christopher Columbus and is dedicated to the principles of charity, unity, fraternity, and patriotism. Whereas the fourth degree, often known as the patriotic degree, is the highest degree of the order. Chartered as an assembly, it encompasses one or more councils in the area and is more visual principle, whose primary purpose is to encourage active Catholic citizenship and foster the spirit of patriotism in members and the community at large. And whereas the Knights of Columbus has grown to become one of the world's largest Catholic fraternal service organizations with nearly two million members actively involved in charitable activities, community service, and advocacy for the marginalized and vulnerable. And whereas the Knights of Columbus has contributed billions of dollars to various charitable causes worldwide, in twenty-twenty-three alone, the Order donated more than one hundred and eighty-five million to charity and more than forty-nine million volunteer hours. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners joins in commending and recognizing the William Gaston Fourth Degree Assembly, number twenty-five thirty-one of the Knights of Columbus, upon the celebration of its twenty-fifth anniversary and extends its heartfelt gratitude for their outstanding contributions to our community, their unwavering commitment to charitable causes, and their tireless efforts in making a meaningful difference in our society. And we will adopt that at our voting meeting on the twenty-third. And I'll present this to Ray and ask you to say a word or two, and then we'll get a picture.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Keger, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Thank you again for this opportunity and the recognition. I don't want to be too redundant. Mr. Keger kind of highlighted what our organization is about and what we do. Again, this particular segment of the Knights of Columbus focuses on patriotism and patriotic activities, so we do things like support things through the Shining Hope Farms in Mount Holly, try to be visible at Veterans Day parades and things of that nature. So again, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for this recognition and just invite any Catholic gentlemen who might be watching tonight to reach out to us and help join us in serving the community. So thank you.
Thank you. You guys want to step forward here? We'll get that picture.
Sure.
Pregnant, we will have all that together. Try to make sure Tom gets in the back. He might break the camera.
Y'all shift down just a little bit to your right, please. Kind of center up.
We do need direction. Direction by the high chair in the back.
You're in trouble.
One, two, three.
Thank you guys so much. Have a great day. Thank you so much.
Take care of both.
Captain Battle, I think we'll take you next. Not wearing a white shirt tonight? You ready to make a little speech?
A little, a little one.
Ninety other years. We're here to celebrate the retirement of one of our loyal county police officers, Captain Robert B. Battle, retired from the county police department on February one of this year after serving twenty-nine years with Gaston County. And whereas Captain Battle has requested that he be awarded the Service Sidearm and Badge worn during his service with the Gaston County Police Department pursuant to General State Statute twenty-one eighty-seven point two and the County Board Resolution number two fifty-nine dated October nineteen eighty-three. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners, one, the badge worn by Captain Battle and the service sidearm will be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Captain Battle be given to him as a remembrance of his service to the county police department. The service sidearm be permanently retired by the Gaston County Police Department and offered to Captain Battle for the purchase price of one dollar. The chief of the county police department is directed to award Captain Battle with the service sidearm and badge as specified and worn by him during his service to Gaston County in accordance with the North Carolina general statutes and the policy of this board. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Captain Robert B. Battle and wishes him the best in his retirement, and this too will be adopted on the April twenty-third meeting. Captain, congratulations. Have a great retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Keger and Board, for recognizing my accomplishment. And I'd also like to thank all the previous boards for supporting the Gaston County Police. It's truly been a home, and I've developed so many friendships throughout the year and contacts that are going to carry on. When I was going and looking into going to law enforcement, my father's a retired FBI agent and was stationed in Charlotte for seventies and eighties. And Gaston County Police was his top pick for me to try and land a job. And I was fortunate enough to do so. And the professionalism and the way that they do things the right way and continue to develop is one of the reasons that he had pointed me in that direction, and it holds true today. So I appreciate all the opportunities that were given to me and through the commission. Thank you.
I'd just like to add why a group of the department's members are up here. Just thirty seconds' worth of information. Gaston County's Police Department was one of the first nationally certified departments in the country, and there aren't many police departments around our country anymore that officers have to have a college degree, a four-year degree. And I don't know if that makes them better for one reason or another, but we've got some smart cops out there, and I'm just proud to be associated with this group. That said, you can go home, go to dinner, have fun. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to hold off on...
I just got the information. They're having a meeting, so they're going to go off, so we'll just send that to them.
Okay.
I was thinking maybe they were busy with calls. They had to wait and come back.
Next on the agenda is still proclamations, commendations, awards, and certificates. We'll be getting Commissioner Fraley down, so if the members from the county police, as well as Rodney Hammerick, Hot Rod, bringing your family and loved ones, please step up. Mr. Fraley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an honor and a privilege for me to be able to present this one. Not only, I know that Rodney's put twenty-nine years in investing in protecting our community, but also he's had her back over there where Matt is for about as long as I can remember also. So we're going to miss you, buddy, but here goes. Master Police Officer J. Rodney Hammerick retired from the Gaston County Police Department March first, twenty-twenty-four, after serving twenty-nine years with Gaston County. Whereas Master Police Officer J. Rodney Hammerick has requested to be awarded a service sidearm and badge worn during the service with Gaston County Police Department pursuant to General Statute twenty-one eighty-seven dot two and the Board Resolution number two fifty-nine dated October twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-three. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commission that the badge worn by Officer Hammerick and his service sidearm be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Officer Hammerick be given to him as remembrance of his service with Gaston County Police Department. Service sidearm permanently retired by Gaston County Police Department and offered to Officer Hammerick for a purchase of one dollar. The chief of the Gaston County Police Department is directed to award Officer Hammerick his service sidearm and badge as specified and worn by him during the service to Gaston County in accordance with North Carolina general statutes and the policy of the Board. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Master Police Officer J. Rodney Hammerick and wishes him the best in his retirement to be adopted the twenty-third day of April twenty-twenty-four. We appreciate you, buddy, and we're going to miss you for sure. Yes, sir. Done, I'm going to pay his dollar, and I'm going to get Captain Battles two in the next three.
Commissioners, wow, didn't think I'd make it. It's almost emotional for me. You know, I stood over there for twenty years. It's hard to believe it's come to an end. But I will say this, Captain Battle emphasized on something, and I'd like to take it back, that, you know, when I applied to this department, I'm from Clayton County, and I applied here in nineteen ninety-five, and I had to fill out an interest card, and they told me there's a waiting list, and they'd be back in touch with me. And this department was so well-recognized at the time, I didn't want to work for Clayton County. I wanted to come over to Gaston County and work. The pay was good, the benefits were good, and I'd heard a lot of good things about the department. So I took my time. I was offered jobs at the Highway Patrol. I was offered jobs at other departments, Charlotte Mecklenburg Police. And I waited until Gaston County called me and said, "Hey, come in for an interview, we got an opening." And when I went in, believe it or not, there was like three or four other people there that were from Charlotte, and they said, "They got a lot more experience than you, but we're going to take a chance on you." And they did, and I said, "You know, my goal was to stay here at least five years to see if I like it and if I fit in and I learn the roads." Because the only thing I knew was seventy-four and eighty-five that passed through here. I didn't know any of the roads. But looking back at my career, now I know almost probably half of the population of Gaston County, it seems like I've run into at some point in time. I've had a good career, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity. And, you know, I just, I hope that law enforcement stays true in Gaston County, that we stay grounded, and our department can hold its head up high all the time and do the right thing. So I appreciate it.
I'm next on the list, and I'd like to say one thing before I get into the Animal Care and Enforcement Appreciation Week. I had the opportunity today and yesterday to serve our citizens in a different capacity. I had jury duty. And we don't understand often the complexity and what all is involved in terms of our court system, because there's so many things that go on outside of the jury box and sitting in a courtroom that take place in order for us to get to that thing, that point in time. But I'm just appreciative of the sheriff's officers who run the court, who operate the court and make it work like a very well-oiled machine. And I was very appreciative to be able to witness that firsthand. Of course, once I was acknowledged as being a county commissioner before the defense attorney, I was immediately dismissed. Imagine that. Imagine we would have some predisposed opinion about opioids and things like that, because it was a criminal trial. But I'm just appreciative of having the opportunity to witness that, and these people that work at this courthouse, they do a wonderful job, and they interface with many different segments of our community. And I appreciate what they do, and it's always a kind face that we see when we come in here to this public forum and at the same time during those meetings. But I just wanted to say that. I'm here tonight to, Officer Captain Yancy and anyone else with Animal Care and Control, if you'd like to come join us, please do so, to make a proclamation that April the fourteenth through the twentieth be recognized as Animal Care and Enforcement Appreciation Week. And again, this is another segment of our law enforcement community in Gaston County that provides a tremendous service to our citizens, to our families, to our furry friends in Gaston County. And Gaston County has had a long-term commitment to animal care and control. That's witnessed by our animal care and control facility up on Rin Drive. If you haven't had the opportunity to go by there, you need to go by and see what your county taxpayer dollars has created. It's wonderful. I actually happened to be there, present, when we opened our surgical suite, so that we can now do, our licensed veterinarian staff can actually do surgeries in our clinic without having to transport them back to a vet. And that saves us transport time, it makes all kinds of efficiencies. And I actually happened to be there, they did the first surgery, and was appreciative of having that opportunity. But if you will, let me read this proclamation. Whereas the care and safety of our community's pets and other animals is paramount. And whereas the safety of our pets is dependent upon the quality and professionalism of our animal care and enforcement personnel. And whereas animal care and enforcement personnel are often the first and the most critical contact our citizens have with the animal care and enforcement services. And whereas animal care and enforcement personnel are a vital link for our community and lost pets, animals in need, or animals presenting a risk to the community. And whereas our animal care and enforcement personnel have contributed substantially to the proper care, control, and treatment of lost pets and other animals. And whereas our animal care and enforcement personnel have exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during their performance of their job this past year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners will designate the week of April the fourteenth through the twentieth to be recognized as Animal Care and Enforcement Appreciation Week in Gaston County in honor of the diligent and professionalism animal care and enforcement personnel have demonstrated in the care and custody of our community's pets and other animals. This will be adopted at our voting meeting on the twenty-third day of April. I'd like to thank you folks again. Captain Yancy, if you'd like to speak, please do so.
Sure.
Certainly. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for this. I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but I do want to thank everyone for their recognition on behalf of our staff, on the behalf of Dr. Hildebrand. It's something I talk about often when we see this well-oiled machine happen at the shelter, and it's because of this staff that we have. All the animals that come through our shelter, they're brought in from our enforcement staff a lot of times, or they come in through citizens. And our staff works really hard to make sure that they're vetted, they're taken care of, they're spayed and neutered with our new surgical suite, and we're able to pass on these animals with great positive outcomes. And that's a testament to the numbers that run through our shelter and the support that we get from the commissioners, the support that we get from the community. And I also want to point out the support we get from our other Gaston County departments. We get tremendous amount of help at our facility from Public Works, from Parks and Rec, finance and budget. We spend a lot of time with them. Thank y'all so much. Our telecommunicators who push out the information, our folks on the road, just the whole family of Gaston County departments that make everything work well is, I think, is really important. And all your citizens, that if you don't know how these things work, and if you're watching today and you're curious, ask the folks in your community, if they work for Gaston County, what they do to help make this family work and make things have positive outcomes. It's very encouraging when you get to be a part of that, and we like to invite you down to the shelter to meet our staff and to meet some animals that you might want to take home with you. Plenty of dogs and cats for you to come see and visit. If you don't want to take one home, you can volunteer, you can help walk dogs, and you can take a cat in a stroller if you like, and just spend some time helping the staff out with some of the pressures that they have there. But they're an amazing staff, they work really hard from day in and day out, and we thank y'all for their recognition. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you get started, could I make a comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank you guys, Animal Care and Control. Fifteen years ago, I probably got more calls and complaints about Gaston County Animal Care and Control Enforcement. And today, I pretty much get none. And that's because of the hard work of all you guys, and we appreciate the effort you put in. And I really mean that. Thank you.
Alan, that's why I was stepping up here real quick, because I was going to say the same thing. We used to get more phone calls about animal care and enforcement than any other department at one time, and we're very grateful for what you guys have done and put the work in to make those. Not that we didn't want those phone calls, but sometimes people tend to jump before they get into it. But...
So thank you to all of you. This, what I'll be doing today, Assistant Chief Holt, y'all come on up here. Get paid more for coming closer. And Brett, where's Brett? Come on, bring them all up here. This here be for proclamation for the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, and it's Public Safety Telecommuners, Telecommunicators Week. So you see, and where's Barry? I'm going to take advantage of something. One of the things that happens, come on in here, all of you. Bring those kids, those small ones closer. But one of the things we want to do, we've been trying to do a series with what's going to happen with Adam and the people. Dr. Eagle and I have talked about trying to do different videos about how, when something does happen, what is it to do? So we're going to be doing videos of these people. Come closer, come on up in here. But these people are the first lines of what you see every day. And that's the, when you're in need, that's who's going to be answering the phone right there. So put a face with a name and always know that that person on the other end of the line, all they want to do is help. That's what they get paid to do, so we're very grateful, and it means a lot. Whereas emergencies in Gaston County can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas Gaston County 911 telecommunications are the first and most critical contact of our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of Gaston County law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical for the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas our safety and law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Gaston County 911 Communications Center. And whereas Gaston County telecommunications are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring the safety. And whereas Gaston County telecommunications have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs in the past year. And whereas the second full week of April has been set aside for the recognition of public safety telecommunications personnel and their crucial role in the protection of life and property. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners thereby declares the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, to be recognized as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In Gaston County, honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. This to be adopted on the twenty-third day of this month. And I wanted to bring up Anderson and Brett, and this is it. This is the first line. A lot of people don't understand what that first line is. You see the people who stand up behind us before. Everyone plays a role. Everyone is a team, and I'm proud to call that team Gaston County, and you guys do it great. And so thank you so much to Brett Anderson. Thank you guys. We'll present this to you. Brett, you want to say something? Anderson, anybody want to? I know that's a spotlight, come on.
Chairman Brown, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize all my coworkers here, because they do an awesome job, to all the commissioners. I always tell them, it's not the easiest job. Nobody calls 911 when everything's going great. They never call and say, "How was your day?" It's always an emergency, and they're never nice. Some people are nice, but for the most part, they're nice. It's a crisis, they're panicking. So their job is to get them calm, get the information that is needed for fire services, for gyms, and for the police, and they do an amazing job. A lot of times, you don't get to see their face, but we're known as the voice. So whenever you talk to them, we're letting you know that everything's going to be okay. Help is on the way, and we're here with you through your time of trouble. And they do an amazing job. So I'm just so appreciative to be a part of this organization. I always tell people, I'm a police officer by job title, and for me as a police officer, I may answer ten calls during the day. That's about it. But these 911 telecommunications, they answer hundreds of calls. And all of those calls, they have to take home, just like I may take my ten calls home. So at the end of the day, keep us in your prayers, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for us and taking the opportunity to acknowledge us.
And I say that wholeheartedly because this board recognizes the hard work put in by staff and trying to get that. Also, our dedicated sheriff's office that's helping us over there, the two ladies at the front door, awesome people right there. Good friends, and we love everybody who's involved and goes on with our law enforcement system. The next proclamation is to proclaim the month of April twenty-twenty-four as Child Abuse Month. I will now call up Ms. Heather Kaufman from the Lighthouse, and anybody here from that group, please come on. Wow, y'all got just as many. And now we get to see exactly what all, this is the second line. So you see, the first line was that of the communicators, and then all of a sudden, you get to see the people who deal with a lot of the issues that arise from that, and it says, "Whereas the children are our most valuable asset in Gaston County, and all children in our community deserve to grow up in a safe and healthy home. And whereas, according to the National Children's Alliance, more than six hundred thousand children are abused each year in the United States of America. Whereas the Lighthouse Children Advocacy Center served four hundred and five kids or children, victims of abuse and neglect, in twenty-twenty-three. And whereas effective strategies and implementations throughout the strong partnerships with Gaston County Department of Social Services, Gaston County Schools, Gaston County District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, the Gaston County Police, faith community, and local law enforcement jurisdictions to address and prevent psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have been lasting consequences for the victims. And whereas Gaston County recognized the importance of investing and protecting future generations as evidenced by a continued focus of strengthening partnerships and fostering collaboration in order to create a safe community where children can thrive. collaboration in order to create a safe community where children can thrive. And whereas, the Lighthouse Children's Advocacy Center is integral to a child healing journey by providing a safe place, healing, and hope for the children of Gaston County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the month of April twenty twenty-four be recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month and calls on all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, businesses, to increase their participation and efforts to support the families, thereby strengthening the community. This to be adopted on the twenty-third day of April. Ms. Heather Kaufman is now going to come up. But I wanted to say something before this. How long we been open, a year now? A year. And a, a vision, Dr. Eagle and DSS and put together, I think. We saw the first one in Iredale County, I think, was where the first one started, and we started this, and we got our own. If you guys have not been through the facility, we're not asking you to go, but we're asking you to have prayers, and, and that's going to be the biggest thing they need, because this place is state-of-the-art for what we're doing. It used to be in a basement, used to have people sitting around like you while someone was getting, uh, care, and it, it's a hard situation anytime when you see a child, uh, in these situations. Our DSS and Dr. Greer and Steve have put together a program now that we're trying to not only provide for the care of the children, we're also providing for care of the people who see with the mental health needs. Jonathan's a part of that program, Trey is a part of that program, and we've asked that to make sure that the mental health and awareness is not only for the children, but also our employees. And that came through Dr. Eagle's, uh, work with trying to figure out what we could do to better our employees. And so, I want to thank you, Dr. Eagle, for having that, to put that forward, for doing the things, and, and your staff, Heather, because this is a difficult situation. It's not something that you want to walk into and see any child that's ever been abused or neglected in some situation, but we're glad that we have people who will do it. So, I'll present you with this. Heather, please step up and speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and just for the recognition and awareness of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. This month, you may see Pinwheel Gardens throughout the community and other efforts like Blue Sundays coming to our faith community at the end of the month, just really to spread awareness for the support and healing that's needed for the children that are served. You know, you mentioned four hundred and five kids last year, we have seen an increase already this year, so are on pace to increase that number, but there's lots of great services and a good group of people that are on our multidisciplinary team, so it takes a lot of people to do this job and to provide healing and hope to the child and to their family. So, thank you for the recognition during the month of April and all of the thoughts and prayers throughout the year. Thank you.
Please, Chair Jordan.
Just would like to kind of piggyback on Heather's appreciation for everybody. This is a very hard field to work in. I would not wish this on any one of the families that live here in this community, but I will also tell you that if you are impacted by this kind of crime, you have a wonderful team waiting for you at the Lighthouse. So, I just want to say thank you for the recognition and thank you for the support.
The next proclamation, commendation, and award has been Public Health Director, Britten Kenny, DHS Director Steve Eaton, Environmental Health and Administrator Sam Di, Communication, Community and Support Service, Nursing Administrator Cheryl Singleton, and Carrie Meyer, Abby Newton, and Paula Black will all be up here. Look at this. Finally, I'm not trying to be mean to the, to the guys, but finally got a good looking guy. Mine is you, Steve. Trust me, at least you didn't fall over his table over here. But, uh... Whereas, the Gaston County Public Health Workforce is a critical component to our emergency response and natural man-made disasters and widespread disease outbreaks in our county, including COVID-19. And whereas, public health measures to control and eliminate infectious disease, improve environmental sanitation, promote health and safety, lifestyle practices, and greatly improve the health statuses and life expectancy for residents of Gaston County and all North Carolinians residents abode. Whereas, Gaston County plays, Public Health plays a critical role in advancing health equity and preventing chronic disease and injuries resulting in improved productivity and this, in decreased health care costs in North Carolina. Whereas, the Gaston County Board of Commissioners committed to a continued emphasis on prevention and public health and helping our county and all of North Carolina reach a better state of health through actions outlined in the Health, the Healthy North Carolina Twenty Thirty objectives. And whereas, communities, local health departments, employers, hospitals, healthcare providers, individual families, insurers, county leaders, and policymakers, faith-based communities, and school and care facilities throughout Gaston County and North Carolina, and develop initiative and innovative solutions to health problems facing the people of Gaston County. Whereas, Gaston County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to recognize public health is public work to ensure all residents are protected from such threats as COVID-19, influenza, foodborne disease, injury, chronic disease such as diabetes, heart disease, and asthma. And whereas, month of April has been designated as a national public health, health month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners in the month of April twenty twenty-four to be recognized as Public Health Month, this to be adopted on the twenty-third day of April. I'll now call on Britten Kenny. Go down and provide you with, thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Steve Eaton, and, and the class of all our health needs, but, um, I wanted to say something, and we didn't get a really chance, but now that it's kind of behind us, this is what happened when you had COVID scaring the country. They stepped up to the plate to make sure that what we did in Gaston County was to help others. No matter what the consequences of different things that you may be challenged to see, you guys stepped up, worked hard, and got us through it, and, uh, so, we're very thankful for that, and now we're on the backside of it, we get to find out how good things are, right? So, thank you.
That's right. So, we look towards, thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the entire board. It really is an honor to accept this on behalf of the, our entire public health team, those that are here tonight, and the many, many others who do this work every day. We heard about the first line and second line, and public health, these folks behind me represent the invisible shield. If we do our jobs right, then you're not going to hear about the diseases that people don't get or the health outcomes that are better. That's just the nature of the work. But that makes recognition like this especially meaningful to us. So, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight for this proclamation, and for everything this board has done to support us and our staff in helping create a healthy community. Your support and advocacy allows us to do what we're passionate about, making sure that every member of our community has an equal chance to a healthy life. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We finally had the Dallas Rescue Squad show up. I'm sure they were extremely busy.
I apologize for what I heard.
That's okay, you're here.
Don't, you work too hard for us, don't worry about that.
By the way, this is Earl Withers III, and, uh, I'll get right to it. Whereas, the Dallas Township Rescue Squad was established in January nineteen seventy-four by a group of dedicated citizens led by Earl Withers Sr. and Mr. Don McCombs, recognizing the urgent need for emergency medical response and transportation in the Dallas area. And in their last five decades, members have responded to over two hundred and eighty-one thousand calls during its service to the Dallas community. And whereas, the inaugural meeting of the Dallas Township Rescue Squad was convened in April of nineteen seventy-four and attended by approximately twenty-three citizens. On August fourth of that year, the Dallas Township Rescue Squad answered its first call for service and responded to two hundred and twelve emergency calls that first year. And whereas, the original call sheet came from that first year remains displayed within their building, serving as a testament to the squad's humble beginnings and dedication to the community service. And whereas, the Dallas Township Rescue Squad's first headquarters were located at the Dallas Funeral Home in Dallas, they began answering calls with just two used station wagons purchased through Gaston County. These two wagons were retrofitted with a stretcher and very basic medical supplies in order to treat and transport patients. And whereas, in April of two thousand and five, they transitioned from an all-volunteer department to a combination department, further solidifying their commitment to the professional and responsive emergency services. And whereas, the Dallas Township Rescue Squad, Squad will celebrate its fiftieth anniversary on April fourteenth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners joins in commending and honoring the Dallas Township Rescue Squad on the celebration of their fiftieth anniversary, and this will be adopted on the twenty-third of April at our regular works, uh, regular meeting.
Earl, once again, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Keager, Chairman Brown, and the rest of the county commissioners and county staff and anybody here in my voice, you are welcome to attend our celebration, which will be held this coming Sunday, April the fourteenth, from two P.M. to six P.M. We plan on having a couple of guest speakers start the program off at two o'clock, and then we'll have an open house for anybody that wants to view our building. We have fifty years of history inside that Rescue Squad, and we're absolutely tickled that we were able to reach this milestone. Uh, on a personal note, my granddad was one of the ones that helped start the Rescue Squad. My dad is currently chief, and I apologize on his behalf, he's at another meeting, he couldn't be here tonight. So, I came here tonight to accept this proclamation, but we have a personal, uh, relationship with the town of Dallas and the Dallas Rescue Squad, knowing that we've got fifty years of service and fifty years of history, trying to serve the citizens of Gaston County and Dallas Township to the best of our ability. So, on behalf of the members and board of directors of the Rescue Squad and Chief Withers, thank you for this, this is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And this will be the last proclamation type of business, the certificates of appreciation for public service. It's a great pleasure for the County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards or commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. First, Donna Hamel, serving on the Council of Aging and the Home and Community Care Block Advisory Committee, and Mr. Mark Stevens, serving on the Tourism Development Advisory Board. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hopes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There will be two more proclamations that you will find in the official record for our voting meeting. One of those will be the acknowledgement of the week of April the twenty-first through the twenty-seventh for twenty twenty-four as Volunteer Week in Gaston County, and also proclaiming the month of April twenty twenty-four as Gaston County Government Month in Gaston County. Those two proclamations will be a part of the official record at our, uh, meeting, our second meeting this month, which is our voting meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is citizens' recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizen recognition will be limited tonight to three minutes. Once those three minutes are up, please allow your name and address when you step up, but also, as I call your name, uh, the first citizen per night is Todd Hustler.
Todd Hustler, three oh two, Flynn Hill Road, Charlevo, North Carolina. I was just coming tonight. I probably won't be here when they have the, um, meeting for the Sheriff's Department to get their budget. I'm encouraging all of you to look at this budget for the Sheriff's Department. I feel like last year, or when he got his last budget, that some of the stuff that was allowed, in my personal opinion, was not done. Now, I'm all for people getting a college degree or high school or GED, but you know, when you put something on your Facebook site showing that two people, and I don't want to go into what they doing, but you Google it, I got a picture on my phone if any of y'all want to see it, but I think we need to take a long, hard look at the Sheriff's Department. I don't think the money that you give Chad Hawkins has been done the way it's supposed to be done. That's my personal opinion, there's a lot of other people got that opinion, a lot of them. So, you know, I, I just asked y'all to take a long, hard look. I'm not going to stay up here three or four minutes, I'm going to make my point and make it clear. You know, I just feel like, you know, when, I know a lot of the deputies, and the morale problem at Sheriff's Department, and they can come up here and say whatever they want to, but a bunch of them's told me that morale problem down there is a problem, you know, and I mean, Hawkins can come up here and say opposite, or he can send his guys up here and they can say the total opposite, but I know some of these deputies, and some of them's hunting jobs now, because they said they refused to work in there. So, that's my point, and I'd like for y'all to look at that budget and see. And another thing I want to ask the, the commissioners, the vehicle that he drives, is it paid for by the citizens? I mean, you don't have to answer tonight, just give me an answer sometime later. Um, and, you know, I just want to know if the citizens paid for that truck. I mean, if, if Chad paid for it, that's fine, but if he didn't, it's awful expensive truck. So, uh, I just want to leave that with you, and I hope y'all take a long, hard look at the next budget. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. The next item is presentations. Lake Wile Marine Commission Proposed Charter Boat and Vessel Rental Regulation. Mr. Neil Brennan, Executive Director of Lake Wile Marine Commission, will now present on behalf of the Lake Wile Marine Commission. Mr. Brennan.
I just told the Punch F, oh, thank you for being here. There we go. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Dr. Eagle, good to be here with you tonight. I, uh, wanted to talk a little bit about how we're going to execute our mission statement. I've been before you before and talked about our mission statement, and it has to do with promoting public policies and support regulations for the preservation of Lake Wile and the wildlife, and for the education and safety of the citizens who use this beautiful natural resource. One exercise of safety tonight, we have been made aware by several law enforcement agencies who patrol Lake Wile that there's a need for regulations about charter boats and vessels that are being rented, sometimes out of the back of a trailer, or charter boats that are being captained by people who are not licensed, according to U.S. Coast Guard regulations. Understand, there's been a lot of boating accidents over the years, and a lot of those accidents are because of a lack of education, particularly safety education. Now, the purpose of the regulation that we've proposed is to ensure that those who rent these vessels out or charter these boats are doing so safely. That's the key. We want to establish a common set of standards for each vessel rented, and I provided for you tonight a kind of summary of the regulation. And the actual regulation that I sent over to, uh, Ms. Buff is a draft, and the reason it's a draft is because we have been collecting input from different folks, most recently the folks at Duke Lake Services, to make sure that our regulation comports with what they have in their guidelines. Now, Lake Marine, uh, Lake Norman Marine Commission has had a charter boat regula, uh, regulation for several years, and it's become aware... regulation for several years, and it's become aware to them as well that there's a need for a rental boat regulation. We call it rental vessel, because we want to make sure we get all the motorized vessels and the non-motorized vessels covered by our regulation. Uh, I also provided you to, so you can understand, this is something that we've invented. Uh, the state of Florida already has some regulations, and I provided you a copy of their regulations, some of the parameters in that. So indeed, North Carolina's state law, and South Carolina didn't have this, but North Carolina does, says if you rent a jet ski to someone, you're required to provide insurance, not just your own liability insurance, but the insurance to the people, to the guy who's going to rent that vessel from you. So we're, that's the only one I could find that talks about anybody requiring insurance for anything on a rental, on a rental-type, uh, motor vessel of any sort. So there's three categories of the vessel that, that our, uh, regulation addresses. It's charter boats, rental boats, and non-motorized vessels. You can see the different kinds there are, pontoon boats, cabin cruisers for the charter boats, and then the rental vessels are some of the same thing, inboard and outboard motor boats, and jet skis. Can't find too many people wanting jet skis today. Those things can be real dangerous, and when you rent them to somebody that doesn't know what they're doing, that can be particularly hazardous. So that's one of the reasons we want to get our arms around this thing and make sure that the people who rent these boats out or charter these boats know what they're doing. And then the non-motorized vessels, we just want to keep track of them as well. Now, who are the people who are renting these things out? Well, you got your marinas out there that are doing this, and they're by and large know what's going on. Matter of fact, we had one, a former marina operator who used to be one of our commissioners help write this thing. As, we also enlisted the services of Bob Wilson, who used to run Tail Race Marina, and he helped write, uh, write this and added some comments to it as well. Um, so that we, we're getting the people in who do this for a living, and we're also looking out for the individuals who do this on a website. Well, who knows who they are, what their background is, or what their pedigree might be. And then you've got the entrepreneurs who show up at the boat ramps down here with a couple of jet skis tied to the back of a trailer and say, hey, Joe, you want to, want to go for a jet ski ride? That, that's happening. Matter of fact, the law enforcement agencies are the ones who've told us about some of these horror stories. York County Sheriff, when I asked him about would he, how did he feel about this regulation? He said, well, I can tell you I'm for it because, or I will enforce it, that law enforcement officers do not endorse regulations, but they will enforce if it makes sense. There's a horror story down there where a bunch of people rented a charter boat, take them out to an island for an evening of fun and enjoying the, the nature and so on and so forth, and they left them there. Had to call the York County Sheriff's Office to come get them. I'm here tonight with our, our chairman of the Lake Wile Marine Commission, Ray Weber over there. Ray's a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary. He happened to be on scene one evening with the Coast Guard Auxiliary when one of the fellows who'd rented a guy a jet ski, that jet ski failed, so they called the gal who, the fellow who rented it to him, he came over and his jet ski, which sank. So we've got, we've, some, some people call them entrepreneurs, I call them yahoos. So we're trying to get our arms around the folks that are doing this thing without knowledge of how to do that or how to do it safely. We're also covering short-term rentals. If you rent a house, I don't know how many people would do this, but if you got a short-term rental on Lake Wile and you want to, uh, say, oh, my boat goes with it, have a good time, well, we, we don't have anything to do with how they rent their VRBO, that's their business. But when they come on Lake Wile, now they come under the purview of the regulation that we're proposing. So that goes for VRBOs and Airbnbs. So what are the requirements? And I've given you a little overview of this thing. Permits will be issued annually by the Lake Wile Marine Commission. We'll give stickers so that, and put them on their vessels. This is kind of like Lake Nor- Lake Norman has done, so that law enforcement can say, hey, that's a rental boat, maybe I ought to take a look at that one a little more carefully, uh, or not. We reinst- uh, restated the U.S. Coast Guard regulations, because we are an interstate waterway, as you know, so we're under, under Coast Guard regulations. So our regulations restate basically the requirements of the Coast Guard. And then another big one is the liability insurance. We have no clue if some of these people that are renting these boats or jet skis out of the back of the truck, whether they've got insurance or not. Maybe they do, maybe they're not, but we're going to require them to have that to get a permit from us. Also, there, the Coast Guard has certain requirements that a vessel be inspected annually. We are not going to get in the business of inspecting vessels, not, just can't, can't handle that. But we've provided in a safety inspection checklist, and this is Bob Wilson's, the one that suggested this. He said, you know, you want to check that boat every time it goes out, make sure it's ready to go now, not just once a year. So we're going to require the proprietor of a rental vessel that had, fell out a checklist that says, hey, these are the things you got to do, and we'll provide them with a checklist. Uh, I'd say training for renters on each vessel. That could be, you know, get in the boat, here's forward, here's reverse, here's, uh, how it works, be careful of this, and also some, um, indication of what red right returning means, what do the markers mean? We're going to require them to give them a map if they're going somewhere. Now, paddleboard people from up on, uh, Whitewater Center probably don't have a map there, aren't going to go that far, but the point is, if you, Lake Wile's a pretty big lake, you can get out there and get, not, not know where you are. We're going to require, when they give them this annual permit, we're going to come take a look at those records, which are going to be required by our regulation to be held for two years. So we've kind of modeled this thing after what the folks up at Lake Norman have done, and based on the input from some of our police officers who patrol, as I indicated. The draft that we have, and the reason I said it was a draft, is because we've, we've asked the Coast Guard to look at it, Gaston County Police Department, York County Sheriff's Office, North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, CNBD, sent it down for the folks at South Carolina DNR to look at. I'm not getting any feedback, but thankfully, we do have some feedback from your, your new attorney, Mr. Joy here. He's a resident of the lake, and he's offered to give us a hand with tightening up, I think was the language he used, sir, to tighten up this regulation to make sure, what we've tried to do, when we had attorney draft this thing, our attorney, what we want to make sure is we're not violating any regulation. We are allowed to make this regulation ourselves by state law, as y'all know. So this is a, a courtesy briefing to y'all of what we're doing and why we're, what we're about. Uh, we don't go forward unless we have your blessing, even though we can do this on our own. I mean, that's our, that's the way I work with, with the Lake Wile Marine Commission. But we want to make sure that we, we do this appropriately, and I appreciate Mr. Joy's offer to help us draft this thing. We most recently met with the Duke people, as I indicated, and they had some wording on theirs that we were able to clean up to make sure we didn't violate their regulations. So this, as we know it, does not conflict with or violate any state laws, but it does fill a void, and this void has been brought to us by some of the owners who, who rent these boats out and charter these vessels and by law enforcement. So we've done our best to try to, uh, make sure we cover all the bases and look forward to working with Mr. Joy to, to tighten this thing up, and we'll get into our public hearing here probably in a couple of weeks. We have to do the public hearing, y'all don't, we do. So we're looking forward to that public hearing later this month. Any questions?
Mr. Keeger.
Well, it's not really a question, Neil, and first of all, thank you so much for all the years you've put in doing the work that you've done, but, yeah, I, I believe and understand everything you're saying, but one thing that concerns me is that I'm hearing so much about regulations, you know, it's taking another freedom away. It's, you know, in my world, that's how I think of it. And, you know, I want us to be smart and safe, but I don't want us to go over the top on things.
Understood.
And, uh, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I, I concur with you completely, sir. I understand where you, your point, and again, these are the things that we, we see a need here, and most of the people who are doing this legally have no problem with this, the owners. It's, it's the ones who are the fly-by-night guys that we want to bring into that to make sure they do it safely as well.
It's just, you know, it's something that, in my adult life, I've always believed, the more regulations, the more taxes, the less freedom we have as Americans. And, uh, I just want us to stay cognizant of that.
Yes, sir.
But again, thank you very much, and thank you, sir.
Mr. Warley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Keeger, uh, but I, also, Neil, thank you and the Lake Wile Marine Commission for what you do. This, this problem has evolved.
Yeah.
This is not something, you know, that has been around for as long as you and, you and I've talked about the history of the lake and growing up around the lake, so that was not a, an issue 40 or 50 years ago, just like the VRBO, the Airbnb, now you see the boat rentals. I have rented a boat before in, in Florida. So I, I think we're just responding to what is happening in our world. You have food trucks. Now, I mean, when I was growing up, nobody ever heard of a food truck, but, but there are regulations that we have to put in place to protect the public's health. And in this situation, not only we're protecting the citizens of our county, but also those that visit here, so I, I welcome this and would support this, look forward to seeing this, uh, go into effect, and I know Mr. Joy will work to make sure that everything is, is legal, but, uh, but this is about public safety ultimately. And like you said, the ones that are doing this legally are, are, they have faith, are they, in good faith, that they are out renting these vessels, whether it be jet skis or pontoon boats for, for the public to enjoy. They would welcome these regulations because it also keeps the folks, the undesirable people out of it, that are not wanting to do the right thing. And, uh, so I welcome this, look forward to hearing more from you, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything I can do to help, I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that comment.
I have some real concerns with this. A, as Commissioner Keeger said, and I agree with some of the things that Commissioner Warley said, but A, we already have police and law enforcement that has laws that they provide. If somebody doesn't have insurance, then there's a law for them. If they don't have different things, they don't have a license, they don't have these different things, but we can't be out on the water inspecting every boat and doing the records check. That's just way too much and too cumbersome for what we have. I mean, I don't understand why it's any different because there's laws already on the books, and the Coast Guard already has what they have as the, uh, purveyor of that. Duke Power basically holds the power over everybody out there on the water. If you think about it, at the end of the day, they, they hold it all. So I don't, I don't understand, is there a cost to this? I do understand that, I think maybe vigilance and, and education would be more of what we need to be striving for rather than regulations and, uh, different pieces of the puzzle, um, because I, I would not want to see the Gaston County Police Department Marine Unit out looking for a sticker on every boat on a July 4th weekend, and it be, we, we were out there for safety anyway, that's what we're there for, it's what you guys are, uh, looking for. So I have some issues with some of the, I'd like to maybe get with you and ask you some more questions.
Yes, sir.
To try to get more understanding, but I don't, I just don't feel the, the part where we're at with creating more regulations. Um, I would assume if you guys are inspecting, there's going to be a cost, um, that would be associated with.
We're going to check, we're going to check their records. Again, uh, some of the people are, some of these boat rental places, they already have, if you go out and rent a boat, there's a checklist that they go through before you get on the boat and take it out. We're not going to be doing any vessel inspections. There are no regu- uh, the police officers that, that I've talked to have briefed us have said, we see these guys out there renting these, we can't do anything about it. They're free to do that. The problem is that they're doing it and they may not, may not have briefed the person on how to do that, how to do it properly, or how to operate the vessel properly. That's our concern, and that's where we're coming from.
And I guess that, that gives me another concern where, and I, I, I don't want to be, I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what the Lake Wile Marine Commission has any different to where we, we used to be a part of the Mountain Island Marine Commission, and we pulled out of that, but do, I guess, maybe Eric would be the one to answer that. Do they have any standing as far as who they can tell to be licensed or registered or anything?
They can make off, I mean, they're, they, like Mr. Brennan said, they can, they have the statute of authority to do that.
Okay. So I guess if we figured that part, and I'm sorry to cut you off, if we do that part, then all of a sudden, I guess there's a back and forth between the, the police and the Marine Commission of who's, that just seems like it's a cumbersome idea for checking records on who to check and where to go and.
Well, we'd be doing the, the checking and the records, sir. We would not leave it up to the, to the law enforcement to do that. Uh, matter of fact, as I indicated, the law enforcement folks have come to us and say, our hands are tied, we see this going on down there, we can't say anything or do anything about it, because there are no regulations about it. There is no regulation that I could find that requires anybody to have any insurance other than the one I cited about a jet ski that I found in North Carolina law. There is no such comparable law in South Carolina. So we're, we're, we're kind of over the, we're, we're trying to pull these things together and put some common sense, uh, standards in place that everybody's playing for the same sheet of music when they do this rental.
I guess I'll ask this question, just to ask the question of John. With free enterprise, I mean, couldn't we, wouldn't we be better suited to go to the General Assembly? They already have some of the DMV to where you have to register a motor and the boat itself. I mean, obviously, that's where it's going to come into the standard of who owns the boat, the vessel, or where we want to consider with a, with a motor. So I think that's where we need to start our journey on this, and I'm not trying, I want to learn more, because I don't know a lot about boating.
Yes, sir.
Who owns what to where, and maybe you're equipped to that. I, I have problems with us giving advice on those type of things, so, um, just for time's sake, if you don't mind, I'd like to get with you guys and try to just see where we're at on some of the questions that I have, because I'm a novice to what happens, but if I want to rent a boat and I want to take my family out on the, on the boat, I don't want to have to go through 89 steps if I've already done this, you know, with the proper channels. So I think that's where the educational part would get, so, uh, we'll move to. Any other questions from the board at this time?
Matter of fact, Mr. Joy has offered his, uh, good offices to help us tweak this thing or make it a little tighter, to use his words, to make sure we're.
Yes, sir.
Uh, focused on what needs to be addressed properly and safely. That's, that's all it is.
Well, we're very thankful, and thank you for your service.
You bet.
That there's the biggest part of what you're doing, so thank you.
Appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
The next item is presentations, medication assisted treatment, MAT, well, I guess that'd be the acronym for that, jail program. Our sheriff, Chad Hawkins, uh, chief deputy Keith McCabe, Dr. Greg Greer, and Ms. Melanie Lowrance, administrator from child, uh, community support services. Dr. Greer.
And before you get started, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that's okay. Excuse me. Um, just one comment. Um, this is in relationship to your opioid plan that you approved back in July of 2023. So this program for the jail would be an adjustment to that plan, and I believe, um, the folks are going to share how those opioid funds are coming into us, more funds ahead of schedule, which relates to the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eagle. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board of Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present medication assisted treatment, MAT, for our Gaston County Jail. Before I start, I do want to state that we did some due diligence and contacted the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as well as our state opioid consultant, uh, and they are, uh, felt that, they were supportive of these efforts, of this proposal, uh, and felt that it was of best practice, uh, due to MAT being an evidence-based model. In addition to that, uh, just today, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services visited us, the Injury and Prevention, uh, excuse me, Injury and Violence Prevention Branch visited today, uh, and that was greatly due to this board approving, uh, our 24/7 community paramedicine program, as well as our recovery transportation, and they wanted, they heard about the work that was being done here in Gaston County and wanted to see it for themselves. Was advised that that visit went very well, and they'll be sharing our model throughout the state. Before I jump into a broad overview of, of MAT, I would like to state that there are 42 counties, uh, throughout, uh, North Carolina that have implemented MAT, uh, within their jail systems, or a portion of, let me say this, a portion of MAT within their jail systems. Research suggests or can, or confirms that their inmates have a 40 to 50 times higher risk of overdose when released from jail, and that 65 to 85% of those incarcerated report drug use. 39% were using some type of substance, uh, during the, the offense that led to their incarceration, and 49% meet criteria for substance use disorder. You may ask, what type of treatment is there for opioid use disorder? It's either detox or abstinence, uh, or medication assisted treatment, MAT. Is either detox or abstinence or medication-assisted treatment, MAT? A person who utilizes detox or abstinence is more likely to overdose than someone who is not in this type of program. And research has shown that seventy-three percent, there's a seventy-three percent decrease in overdose mortality when using MAT. As I stated before, when we did some consult with the state, MAT or MOUD, which is Medication for Opioid Use Disorder, is evidence-based. And how is this beneficial for us, for our jails? First and foremost, for the citizens or inmates that are using our jail facilities, it's basic humanity. If someone who has been arrested enters the jail system, who was a part of an MAT program, is allowed to continue that, that lessens violent episodes and injuries within our jails, which also decreases, decreases recidivism and increases facility safety and security. I do want to read the quote from the National Sheriff's Association, which states that jails are on the front lines of this epidemic, and they are also in a unique position to initiate treatment in a controlled and safe environment. What is important to understand regarding the legal requirements around MAT is that the ADA or the American with Disabilities Act protects people in recovery from opioid use disorder, including those who are receiving MAT or MOUD. The Department of Justice and courts have found denying or delaying MAT to inmates violates the ADA as well as the Eighth and Fourteenth Amendment rights. The National Commission, which is an accredited, part of the jail accreditation, the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare will begin requiring jails to have MAT policy in early 2025 and implementation in 2026. Just an overview of our current jail population from the last four years. And you can see those numbers. If you average those, we're averaging about five hundred and eighty. The average is five hundred and eighty, and the sheriff can attest, and Chief Deputy McCabe can attest to the daily jail numbers. What's important to realize in this is that in February of 2024, sixty-four individuals were in opioid withdrawal that entered our jail system or who would have been a part of the detox protocol. I'm now going to bounce to Ms. Lowrance, who will share some more details, who also will tell you specifically what MAT is and the actual proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Greer. So in researching and developing a program that we believe best meets the needs that have been identified in Gaston County, we reached out to several other counties who have already implemented jail MAT programs. And some of what we heard from them is on your screen. Information from Buncombe, Pitt, and Durham. You can see from the daily, average daily populations, Gaston County exceeds the daily populations of these three jails. Excuse me, Buncombe County is closest to us with an average daily population of four hundred and fifty. They are dosing currently between thirty and sixty inmates with MAT every day. You can see the other counties are a little bit less than that. Currently, Buncombe County has eight staff administering their program. Pitt has five. You see the budget information there. We were very interested in learning the impact they've seen in their communities, the use of the opioid settlement funds. As this board knows and this board has encouraged, we are very focused on spending these dollars in a way that has a positive impact on our community, a measurable positive impact on our citizens. What we heard from Buncombe County, Buncombe County has one of the longest-standing jail MAT programs in the state. They've seen a twenty-two percent reduction in the number of opioid deaths with individuals who are previously incarcerated in their jail. Both Buncombe and Durham report a seventeen percent decrease in recidivism after they implemented their jail MAT programs. You see Gaston County's data there on the far right that Dr. Greer just mentioned. So what is the proposal? So our proposal is that the community paramedics deliver medication-assisted treatment, the medication component of that in our jail, to individuals who enter the jail with an active medication prescription, as well as to those who enter our jail in withdrawal, in opioid detox, and meet the criteria to receive MAT. The GEMS received approval from the State Medical Director very recently, within the last couple of weeks, to expand their current MAT protocol to be able to dose individuals while they are incarcerated, as well as seven days post-release, which will allow for a warm handoff to a community provider when they leave the jail. The community paramedics will be the ones dosing. MAT dosing is required daily. So the proposal includes two community paramedics who would be embedded in the jail twelve hours a day, seven days a week. And the medication, the proposed medication would be in the form of strips or tablets that are dissolved under the tongue, similar to Zofran. The community paramedic would administer the medication, remain with the individual face-to-face with that individual until they visually confirm the medication has dissolved under their tongue, which takes about one to two minutes. During that period of time, the individual will not be allowed to take a drink or to have their hands anywhere near their face. And the community paramedics will remain with them thirty minutes after to ensure there are no negative effects from the medication. The GEMS medical director, Dr. Matthews, has agreed to meet with the jail MAT patients on a regular basis. It is a very strong recommendation from the National, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as well as all the jails we've spoken to across the state, to also embed a peer support specialist, a certified peer support specialist, who can provide support not only to the community paramedics, but also to the inmates who are receiving MAT. When they are not dosing, we would like for the community paramedics and that peer support specialist to be educating our jail staff, as well as the inmates, on how to prevent overdose, on harm reduction strategies, and stigma reduction. They will, of course, be monitoring the MAT patients regularly. And what we know from our research is that jail MAT programs are substantially more successful when there is that warm handoff that I mentioned earlier to a community provider. We have a unique setup here in Gaston County, thanks to the programs that this commission has approved to fund with the opioid settlement funds, in that we have a recovery transportation program, we have a 24/7 community paramedicine program, and we have two organizations, two outpatient treatment providers in the community who can treat individuals, Gaston County citizens, who can't afford treatment. So those, that system of care is in place because of the programs you've already approved. In fact, when we talked with NCACC and with the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch today, that was one component of this model that they were most impressed by, that we had so many pieces of the puzzle already in place. Some other jails have struggled with that. The proposal includes six total staff, the two community paramedics, two detention officers that we didn't realize would be needed initially until we realized how long it would require to, how much time would be required to dose individuals. So the detention officers will allow for safe movement of the individuals within the jail to receive their medication. A certified peer support specialist and a captain who would oversee all of GEMS opioid programs, so not just the jail MAT program, but also community paramedicine, the post-overdose response team embedded within that, and the recovery transportation program. It includes one vehicle. It includes medication costs. At this point, we've estimated the medication pretty high. However, we are in conversation with and feel very confident that we're going to be able to get some reduced pricing through Contegra. We were actually in conversation as recently as just before this meeting. So the budget for a two-year program is $1.4 million. If the reduced medication pricing comes to fruition, which we expect it will, that number should be reduced by about $100,000. We are allowed to fund this fully with opioid settlement funds under Option A, which is the option that Gaston County is currently funding. In addition, we are presently exploring a grant opportunity that's out there from the Department of Public Safety. And we fully expect there to be more grant opportunities moving forward as more jails are encouraged to implement these types of programs. So we're looking at grant funds right now to help offset the cost, and we will be doing that moving forward. Leveraging these opioid settlement funds to bring in additional dollars has been a goal and one of our primary principles from the beginning. Some considerations, I think most of these have already been mentioned. We did present this model to the opioid settlement team, Gaston County's opioid settlement team. They, it does, this proposal does come to you with their recommendation to fund as proposed. Also, as Dr. Eagle mentioned earlier, when we presented the funding plan to you and you approved it in July, we expected that at this point, based on the payment schedules the state had given us, that we would have received a little over $4 million. To date, we've received a little over $7 million. And that's because some of the companies have opted to pay their financial penalties early, and some settlements have been finalized that we weren't really sure would be finalized. So we've received a little over $7 million to date, with another million plus to be received in the next few months. All that to say, if you choose to allocate the $1.4 million for the jail MAT program, it will not impact the strategies you approved in the funding plan in July because we have more money than we expected to.
Is that the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board at this time? Mr. Cloninger.
This is a question I have that I would like to ask our attorney. And first, also, I wanted to say that I'm not against helping people reform from drug addiction, agreeable to give a Narcan to any inmates being released and determined to have a drug addiction. But I do need clarification on a slide to our attorney. Is that this statement, I just need to know what the details means going forward. Is that where it reads, "The National Commission on Correctional Healthcare will begin requiring jails to have MAT policy in early 2025. Implementation required in early 2026." So can you explain to me further what that is?
That's an outside organization that offers accreditation to confinement facilities. Accreditation is generally seen as something that's very desirable to have. It means that you're doing it right. It's not required to operate the jail. Compliance with the North Carolina minimum standards and our code of administrative, our administrative code, specifically Section 14J, that is required. That's, that does not currently require MAT. I will tell you that the bullet just up from that is accurate. The Department of Justice, DOJ, I looked at their website earlier today. They actually are listing out particular states that they have went to and entered into consent decrees where you have someone who is currently prescribed MAT. That person comes into, in Massachusetts, it was the drug courts. In Pennsylvania, they're looking at confinement facilities. That person comes in, is already under a doctor's care, already prescribed MAT. They're under an obligation to continue that on. Refusing that in a blanket policy is being considered a violation of the ADA.
Okay.
So that's accurate. But the accreditation, that is not a mandatory legal requirement.
Okay. I have a few more questions. Do you want, is that okay? So will the inmates be required to do aftercare when released? And if so, for how long? How will you continue to follow? And who will oversee? And how will you require them to do that? Or will you require them to do that, once they start that process of receiving?
And Commissioner, to clarify, you mean specifically post-release?
Yes, I do.
So post-release, we will not be able to require anyone to receive treatment. We will have, GEMS will have their seven days post-release to be able to continue dosing until they connect them with a provider in the community, either one that's funded by the opioid settlement funds or another provider. We actually have had conversations about how we can capture data long-term and how we can measure compliance long-term. GEMS and I have talked about that this week, even potentially using numbers as identifiers. We have to, of course, be very cautious not to infringe on any private health information. So we are talking about that, and in some of the grants we're exploring, that is an expectation, that there is some reporting back. And the one we're looking at right now is there's an expectation to report back compliance for six months post-release. So we are exploring how to do that. We will not be able to require it, but we certainly want to monitor.
Okay, all right. So I think that you touched briefly on this, but so what kind of supportive services, like housing or jobs, will help with these services? And how will you track those that need that medication?
That's a work in progress, Commissioner Cloninger. Again, as Ms. Lowrance stated, it's not a requirement. So we can, the community paramedicine program can offer solutions, can offer additional resources, but they will have to tap into it. We're currently working on, or we do have a resource guide that is posted on our website that we utilize to connect folks to, as well as we're in constant contact with the continuum of care to broaden those resources to make sure that there are no gaps in treatment or service delivery.
Okay. I have a few more. I'm sorry. What is the difference in the cost for the jail's medical provider to distribute MAT?
Yeah.
We did receive a quote from the incoming, the jail health provider with whom the jail is currently in contract negotiations. That quote exceeds what our internal cost would be. We designed the budget based on thirty individuals being dosed daily. In reality, we're not really sure how many people will meet the criteria and opt in to receiving MAT. Based on what we've heard from other jails, we expect that percentage to be pretty high of those who are eligible. What we do know with the new incoming jail health provider is that the budget they gave us was also based on thirty individuals. And once we, if and when we exceed thirty individuals, there is an additional per diem cost, which would not be a consideration in our internal proposal. The only increase would be in the medication cost. But it is about roughly with the medication, reduced cost of medication, that we expect about $100,000 more per year if it stays at thirty and doesn't exceed thirty.
One second, while you're in the middle. Dr. Green, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, just a follow-up to that. Could Chief Deputy McCabe possibly speak to the benefit of having a partnership with GEMS and the community paramedicine program being the provider? Because I think that's a distinguishing factor as well.
Yeah, and Commissioners, I appreciate it. And I've been a paramedic since 1990. I actually worked for GEMS from 1997 to 2000. And it's amazing how far EMS has come.
But the advantage I see with this program is the fact that that warm handoff, with the hope of success, Commissioner Cloninger, that by utilizing the community paramedics, hopefully, we've built that relationship within our facility, and that there'd be that warm handoff from the community paramedic that's working inside our jail to the community paramedic that's working in the field with the hope of the success of reducing recidivism. We're in a business of reducing our population. As you can see, our max population's 664. We're at 626 last year. We're trying our best to reduce recidivism and reduce crime in our community, which unfortunately is a result of drugs in our community. So hopefully, with the partnership with Community Support Services and GEMS, we'll be at success. And like they were saying, no other community in North Carolina is doing this right now. We're kind of be the spearhead. They're doing MAT, but not utilizing our community paramedics. And this partnership that we would have, and actually talking to some that are actually currently doing it, they're like, man, this is one heck of a plan that you got going on here that. And hopefully, you know, we'll be able to spearhead it and show that our success, so therefore, we can share that information with other communities in North Carolina. share that information with other communities in North Carolina.
Thank you for sharing that. So, who will be managing the Certified Peer Support Specialist?
GEMS currently has Peer Support Specialist embedded within their Community Paramedicine Program. So, one option would be to expand that contract and that is currently with Olive Branch Ministry.
Okay, and they're located here.
They are, they're in Gastonia. Their office is beside the hospital.
Okay, all right. If there's no follow-up after seven days of someone leaving, which that you said that there's no follow-up, right? In seven days? Then how will you know about the success of the program?
So, the recidivism would be monitored, of course, by their return or not, their reentry in the jail system. In terms of the number of overdoses, while we would not have access to names and protected health information, GEMS does. And using their systems, they can-
So, you're going to be able to track it?
Yes, ma'am.
No matter what?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then what happens that once this money is gone away, then how do you look toward funding the program from there after?
So, I think that goes back to one of the previous slides regarding leveraging our current funds with grant funds as well. As we know, we will have opioid settlement funds for the next 18 years, although we are receiving them, some of those earlier than anticipated, but hopefully it would not be at a cost to the county because we will continue to leverage grant opportunities.
Thank you for presenting all the information, hard work too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That ends my questions.
Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Slide seven shows the six additional staff required to implement the program in the current, based on their current status, current status. What part of this would be interface with our current health provider in the jail? That's, help me understand that piece apart because you alluded to it briefly, it's not in any of the slides, so help me understand that.
So, that's a fair question, sir. So, there'd be a memorandum of understanding, a memorandum of agreement with our medical service provider to ensure we can share that health information across, so therefore providing the best care to the inmates.
Okay. And if I were correct, Ms. Lorenz, you were talking about post-treatment and after they leave the incarceration, their efforts and their activity would be more voluntary than required. Obviously, we're going to encourage them to keep a surprise of their situation and what's going on, but it won't be a requirement. And obviously, that's a metric that you'd want to keep up with and find out who's participating and what demographic worked the best to help them participate.
Yes.
Obviously, we, and I'm very familiar with Olive Branch and Olive Branch has done a yeoman's job here and as well as in Hickory. I think they're both here in Hickory, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I think they're doing a similar program in Hickory.
Yes, sir.
Top of county hospitals. But with these additional staff people and this cost, there's no real direction from our health provider to the jail in terms of interfacing with these individuals. They'll just be aware of it, correct? The medical orders be written by, to be a part of this program, will be written by the contract individual?
So, once they meet the criteria after the screening, right?
Correct.
And they participate in the program, and I can pass that to Mark Lampier, but
Sure.
they've got a state protocol now that they, were able to get passed by the state medical examiner, to allow them to continue dosing during their time of incarceration.
Right.
And then pass the seven days.
Okay.
I don't know if, did I answer your question?
Well, I was just, I was trying to understand the role of the contract services that we have in the jail and what they play in directing any of these staff people. That's what I-
No, yeah, that's, yeah, that's not.
That's the answer that I wanted to hear. I just wasn't wanting to tell you what I wanted to hear. But yes, I understand, they will not direct these people in any way, shape, or form.
No, sir.
Because I didn't think that they should.
No.
But that's the reason I asked that question.
The current contract will be for behavioral and physical health.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woolley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep. I think, I mean, it sounds like a wonderful program and opportunity for us with the settlement funding to be able to start this, but I'm trying to understand, so we're going to have two community paramedics, two detention officers that are embedded in the jail, correct?
Two additional.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, are they there?
Yes, sir.
How long? How do, how do four people do that? Is this, I mean, do we have two shifts of these groups? So, and how many?
Right, yeah.
I'm trying to understand how, how the logistics of this.
They're currently working a 12-hour rotation, so that's why you would need the two paramedics and the two detention officers, right? So, they work Friday, Saturday.
So, only one per shift?
Correct, correct. For up to, for 12 hours. So, the hours would be determined on when would be the best time for dosing, that it wouldn't interfere with the current mid-pass. We've talked about maybe like a 12 noon, a 12 midnight, where we'd be able to provide that dosing. And the detention officer would be, either utilize that where we decided to do that, whether it was in medical or if we went up to the day room or to one of our rooms to do the dosing, that they would be there for the safety and security of that community paramedic.
Okay, so, so one detention officer per shift, one paramedic per shift, the peer support specialist, doesn't have to be on scene, that's not required?
That's correct.
But then another captain from GEMS to oversee it, which I'm assuming, but that's going to require an additional hire or a promotion to be this specialist, Mark? Is that what you're saying?
Evening. Right now, our captain that overs, their assignment is, is community outreach and employee engagement. And more and more of their time, in fact, almost all their time is being taken up by opioid programs that we're already doing. Once we take this on, essentially all their time and likely more than they really have will be taken up by opioid programs. So, what we're trying to do is backfill some of the other duties that that person was supposed to do. And that's why we submitted for a captain for all these, internal to the jail and external to the community program. So, I did want to comment, if I could, on a couple of things. One of the, one of the great things about the design of this program, besides collaboration, which is probably pretty obvious already, is that there's continuity of care. The paramedics, the community paramedics in the jail will give this buprenorphine under the orders of our medical director, not the jail health provider.
That's all.
And all the time that they, the person is in jail, however long that is. And then, once that person is ready to get out, and by the way, they're going to be doing some education while they're in the jail too, okay? That's one, another component of it. And then when they're ready to be discharged from the jail, or whatever the right word is for that.
Released.
Yeah, released. I'm used to the hospital, sorry. Then they will have essentially some Narcan, some materials to go with them, sort of a little care kit, if you will. They'll have already had the education. When they get out, they will be handed off to another community paramedic who's really working side-by-side already with these people in the jail. And most people, although we don't have exact numbers, most people, it's been shown in some of these other programs, stick with this because we've removed barriers. We already have transportation in place, we have this direct handoff, you don't have to go find another provider or things like that. And our goal, when we induce somebody in the field, is to have them with a definitive provider within seven days. So, what we do is to get them started on this. We deal with them for up to seven days and in that time, we hook them up with somebody who can continue that care, but then we still provide transportation if we need it. Our average is right around four days and so we try to minimize that, so we only have to go out and dose them during that time that, between the time that we start, or in this case, when they get released from jail, and the time that we hook them up with a provider somewhere. So, it's really a great handoff, a great collaboration.
Continuity of care.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm good.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Go ahead.
And I appreciate the experts here. We spoke on the MAT program and they are definitely experts in this and they have done a lot of homework here. As the sheriff, it's my responsibility that recovery is great, the success of people after they leave the jail, we are definitely interested in all that, but as the sheriff, I'm also responsible for the liability of the county. And we talked about requirements coming from accreditation, but there's also statutory requirements that are coming. We've been advised by all legal counsel to get ahead of this because we're going to be faced with this. So, while we do have the funds, and I'm sure later down the road, we will have to pick up these expenses, but if there's litigation, we're not going to be successful in this and the ADA is behind that. So, I just want to put that part out there that really through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, International Sheriff's Association, we have been advised about moving forward that we need, and so we've also consulted with other attorneys and they've advised us that this is coming, it's definitely coming, so we need to prepare. So, that's where we're at right now. Thank you for your time.
I have questions. And like I said, I guess I'm just the lost part of this. Mark, you, when we talk about different pieces of this, your peer support, is that a different group? Because I think you use Jonathan now for your mental health, correct?
That, that's two different kinds of peer support. In this case, we're talking about peer support for people who have, okay?
Second question is, and I guess if we don't mind, because as the board knows, this is just for communication tonight and where there's no action taken. So, that's the best part of this. We can kind of regroup and, because for me, I need a diagram. I'm sorry, I got to have some pieces where this kind of shows me where everybody's at because with two here, two there, I understand there's one personally each shift, but you know, there's a, there's a transport vehicle, there's different pieces of that puzzle. I don't want to, I don't want to throw mud, I want to figure out a way to make it work.
Sure.
The other part of that is, when you're talking about, is the word release, I guess as they've been released from jail, we're giving them a to-go pack of Narcan, is that where you were?
We, that was one of the ideas.
The reason I say that is, we're going to be having Narcan out here and everybody's going to be, we already have the issue we have outside of the jail, I don't want to use it, what we have inside. Imagine what we have outside for people coming in. So, that would be an issue I would want to try to see, different possibilities. The other part is, and I noticed you mentioned Contegra, is I know they're federally certified. Are there other groups that do that? Competition is good as far as, I'm not saying it's not, I'm just using example, I don't know, I know the Contegra does a lot with their federal piece of that, but does that, are we bound to them, is what I'm saying?
Specific for the medication?
Yes.
The specific funding then that allows for medication to be purchased at a lot cheaper is called 340B pricing and Contegra is the only pharmacy in Gaston County that is a 340B pharmacy. So, they're, they are the only organization, the only pharmacy who could pass along those savings.
And that pharmacy is, where is that located?
It is local, yes.
Is that Second Street, is that over there where that's at?
I think they have more than one pharmacy, they have multiple locations.
I guess the question is because obviously we kind of have a, and I don't want to be mean to anybody, we have clusters of where the homeless people are.
Yes.
We've obviously seen that in different things, so I want to make sure if it's something that we have, I mean, education I think is going to be the biggest part of how we do that. I'm very pleased that you guys are taking this on. Sheriff, how do we get somebody to hold something under their tongue for two minutes and, I mean, is that something that usually they're willing to do, I assume, if they're in that situation?
Well, I'll speak to this. So, when someone is going through withdrawal, it is a horrible thing. It's life-threatening. So, most of them are more than willing to accept that care
That was my-
to not go through what they're going through. Obviously, we want to preserve life, but there's another element to that is when people become very combative, that is dangerous to our staff, that's dangerous to that individual. They can injure themselves, injure staff, and the medical staff has to come in when they're under the care. So, most of them want that. They want the care, they want the treatment because they don't want to be in that suffering.
And that's my biggest concern for our employees on the other side of that
Mine, too.
because obviously we've seen tasers don't work in these situations of whatever. Is there a time period to where they first come in? Because I'm a novice, I apologize, I don't know. Is there a time period when they come in that they have to sober up or is this the sobering period? Is it, I remember, Mark, you said seven days? I've heard people something about 14-day programs or what is it? If I were to come in today and I had that, what would it look like for me to be able to receive the first care?
So, you could speak to that, but when the medical staff, when they first come in, before they ever enter our facility, they're examined by our medical staff and a lot of those things are determined and then they're passed off. So, before they ever enter the facility, they go through a series of medical testing and processes to make sure that, one, they're healthy enough to enter our jail, but outside of addictions, all those things are determined and then it's communicated.
And the other part of that, Steve, you may be, Olive Branch is only open, what, two, three days a week? I know we use that as some piece of the puzzle as well?
I don't have their specific hours. I know they're working multiple counties and have strong coverage in Gaston County.
Okay.
Seven days a week.
The peer support from Olive Branch is going to be contracted as it is now and we will set the hours.
Okay.
Right now, we have peer support from Olive Branch embedded with our community paramedics that work out in the field and we would just extend that contract to get some coverage. It wouldn't, might not be 12:07 like the detention officer and the community paramedic, but they would have sufficient time to help in the jail for peer support.
Any other questions from the board at this time? I guess what I would like to see is kind of, if we could get like some kind of little, just a flow chart of where it shows and, Dr. Eagle knows, I ask a lot, just kind of figure out how we get there and what you guys see as the best practice. I know you guys have talked about other counties and different places. If we're going to be the first, Dr. Eagle will tell you, we want to be the best at what we provide and how we get there and because we want to show it to the world, we want to be the part. I would like to just see that part, if you don't mind just working on something, Dr. Eagle, just to kind of, you know, you can just call me aside and just say, hey, this is how we put the puzzle together. Because I think it's a great program, but I'd like to see just more about where the nuts and bolts are.
We'll have that prepared by the end of the week for Dr. Eagle.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Richard Fraley.
I mean, obviously, it's going to be a very expensive program and once the opioid funds are depleted, or is there going to be a way we can track the success of this program? Because I don't want, you know, two, three, four, five years down the road, we're sitting here voting to spend $10 million worth of taxpayers' money on a program that really wasn't successful. Hopefully, it will be, hopefully it'll accomplish everything we're talking about doing, but I can see that happening because I've been doing this long enough to know, you start something like this, these funds run out, then we're going to be sitting here voting to spend millions of dollars to keep this program going.
Absolutely. I think we can include that in our one-page to Dr. Eagle, but in short, I think there's two tracking mechanisms. The first is reentry back into the jail and then on the, on the backside of it, once released from jail, if someone's not cooperating with the Community Paramedicine Program and following up with treatment, we'll know that as well.
Will we have a strike program for those people? Go ahead, if you want to answer his question first.
Just to tag on to that, the great thing about this program is we're not really handing them off to somebody else, we're handing them off to our own people. So, we will know what happens when they come out of the jail, we'll know whether we're still dosing them, we'll know whether we hooked them up with definitive care. So, we'll be able to, to report directly on the success of that.
Keep records of how it's working.
Absolutely, as we do now for the people that are in the field.
Okay.
Commissioner Fraley, to answer that again, what we're looking at here, right now, we are getting ahead of this voluntarily, but it's going to be mandatory. So, I understand what you're saying, the funds are going to run, but it's like other things that happens to us in government, it's going to become mandatory. We're not going to have a choice. We're not going to have a choice. So that's where we're at right now. We're, we're fortunate right now that we do have the funding that we have gotten from the opioid settlement. But the problem is, this is going to become an issue. Everything we've been advised, this is not going to be an option, it is going to be mandatory.
Well, I think a lot of things that are mandatory now, once we hopefully have change of administration in Washington, some of these things might go away that we're dealing with right now, so. This is my opinion.
Commissioner Fraley, if I can add, one, one benefit of using opioid settlement funds is that there are such strict requirements for transparency and accountability and impact reporting. Any program that is funded with opioid settlement funds has to report their outcomes to us at Community Support Services every month, and then we report those annually to the state. Since the opioid settlement funds are private dollars, anything that, any program that this board approves allocating funds to, if it's not producing the desired outcomes, which we're going to know because we're receiving that data monthly, we're not bound to continue it because they are private dollars and they're not grant dollars. So to your point, if it's not working, then we will know that because we're tracking the data so closely, and, and we can shift, we can make the adjustments we need to make.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we're using that money as the most cost-effective-
Absolutely.
-effective way possible, and I appreciate all you're doing to-
Yes, sir.
-look into this. Thank you.
Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, with our self-monitoring and self-examination of the programs that we're putting, we've already put in place, this is an augmentation of that, adding an additional layer to blend what we do internally, after having brought them off the street into the jail, blend internally, and then as we see their exit back into society, we'll continue to try to close that loop, creating that continuity of care. And it's all self-controlled, we control it. We have the data, we ask the questions, we create the narrative.
Absolutely.
And we share that, and you're going to put together a ma, a matrix to bring that back to the board and to the community to show what the program does and what it brings to all of our citizens, I think. Am I correct?
We already have a workbook, yes, sir, yes.
Thank you.
I guess what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, Steve, Dr. Greer, and Dr. Eagle, if we could do a conference call maybe Friday of this week, I want to ask some questions. I want to add someone to our call to see about some of the bits and pieces around that, I think that can help on some of the issues that I have and trying to figure out some of those questions. Any other questions from the board at this time?
Seeing none, thank you so much. And we look forward to the next piece of this, but like I said, tonight is just for information purposes on this, and we will continue to get more information before we make a decision. And I had, is there grant money that we could do outside of opioid money to continue that?
Yes, sir.
I know that Sheriff Shaken said, yes. The reason I ask that question is if there's something we can go ahead and start looking at-
We are, we are, have our start.
Whatever we can figure out to get in the program.
Yes, 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 sir.
Thank you. Any other matters need to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, a joint Board of Commissioners and a Board of Election?
Board of Education.
I said Board of Commissioners?
And Board of Education.
You said Elections.
I was going to introduce the elected official, Todd Kenlaw, from the Board of Education. Out there, if you'll give me a second. A special meeting has been scheduled for April seventeenth at twelve o'clock to two P.M. at the Gaston County Administration Building across the street, third floor, conference room three A to discuss budgetary matters for Gaston County schools. Also wanted to say, Justin, come over here to the thing. Yes, you, Justin, come on. We take a lot of pride in our employees, and Justin is going to be leaving Saturday. He's going to Boston, Massachusetts, I don't know, he'll do something called the Boston Marathon. So Justin, we just wanted to bring you up, tell you we're pulling for you, hope everything goes well. Represent us well as you go there. Justin qualified last year for that, if you guys don't know, that's a tough thing. And if you go through Belmont about seven forty in the morning, you'll see him huffing and puffing through there, rain or shine. So I just wanted to bring you up, Justin, just because I want to say congratulations, good luck. Our attorney's going to go with him to make sure he assists him. Mark, you might want to be on a helicopter, ready to fly up there just in case we need it. But just wanted to bring you up and say hello, and thank you for that. Maybe Vincent can go up and teach you some of his, how not to get hurt when you're on activity time. But just wanted to say that and thank you, everybody, for, any other matters need to come before the board? This concludes our work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-third, six P.M. here in the Harlem Beach Gaston Public Forum. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please refer to them to Donna S. Buff at seven oh four eight six six three one nine six. Good night, Kenlaws.